Good evening, everyone. I welcome you to our Tuesday, May 11th work session. This will be a joint work session today with our planning commissioners. Thank you very much for joining us today. Why don't we start off by taking the role, Ms. Peters Garcia, if you'll do both council and and the commission as well?
Oh, my gosh. Mayor Robert Oxmacher.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Luke Wagner.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Lisa Lake. Chairperson Phil Goldstein. Co-chair. Marty Drost. Commissioner Tom Wood. Commissioner. Renzo Bianchi. Commissioner Michael Lowery.
Here.
All right, thank you. Looks like we have four council members. I think we expect Councilmember Lake to be joining us. And four planning commissioners. So, thank you all for being here. We have two items to discuss today. The first is County Road 5 update. And the second is some land use code amendments associated with natural medicine. So, why don't we begin with County Road 5?
Sounds good. Let me share. Screen two. All right. Good evening, councilmembers. We are here tonight to give you a very brief update on the County Road 5 Bridge project. So that way you can get to the second part of your evening. With us today, we have brought the J U B team out in order to provide that summary. Currently, we are finishing up our first work order. And we'll be hoping to advance to the second one. Tonight is just about providing you just a general update and giving you a brief time for questions. On our project team is Dan Tuttle, our project manager. Jennifer Gork from Environmental and Jameis Darrow for Hydraulics is just a portion of our project team. I'll hand it over to them. To start off the presentation.
Does that work?
You got it.
Awesome. Dan Tuttle with J U B Engineers. I'm the project manager for the project. Thank you for having us tonight. We just wanted to give you a brief update on the work that we've done to date and kind of where we're headed in the next phase. So, as many of you know, we got this project back in the fall of 24. And we were kind of scoped with looking at the corridor from a safety, resiliency aspect. The limits, you can see it here, we were looking up to a little north of Harmony down to Whitesal Street. As you know, that's a lot of it's within a floodplain. So, a big part of this is a floodplain project, which Jameis will talk about in a little bit. To start off, we did a lot of data collection. We did topographic survey. We did utility locates, environmental findings. And we did some traffic analysis to look into the future. What does traffic look like on Harmony, on County Road 5? And then we did a lot of stakeholder engagements. Once we got to a certain point in our analysis, we reached out to all the different stakeholders along the corridor. Talked to them about, you know, their concerns. And we kind of built that into our project. So, and then ultimately, we provided a recommendation to Kim and their staff. So, traffic engineering, we started off doing counts. We went out, did a lot of traffic counts. And then we looked at a lot of different scenarios. So, we looked at an interim scenario, an ultimate scenario. With the ultimate scenario, we're looking at, we anticipated six lanes on Harmony. And that goes out to 2045. So, we, you know, look at the traffic data and we project that out to 2045. So, what you see here in the upper left is the interim. If we were just to build for the next 10 years, you'd be looking at dual lefts, northbound to westbound from County Road 5. One northbound, two southbound lanes. Part of it is we got to build that bridge because the bridge is just south of the intersections. We got to build that out to the ultimate configuration. So, the bridge gets quite a bit wider. We'll talk about that in a little bit. But if you want to go to the next slide. And then we did look at different roadway alignments from Harmony down to Whitesal. You could kind of see here that we swung the road out a little bit to the west. We did three different alignments. One was kind of keep that existing alignment the way it is. But as the roadway gets wider, we kind of encroach into the Pooter River. So, we decided we need to push that a little bit to the west. So, we had a couple of options that kind of show that shift to the west. Once we get into the final design phase, we'll kind of refine that design a little bit more. Kind of depends on the fill and the slopes and all that stuff. So, but these were probably a 15% design. The other big ticket item was the bridge. So, currently, the existing span of that bridge is 160 feet. Working with our hydraulic team, we determined a 240-foot span. Works better for the river hydraulics. On top of that, the existing width of the bridge is at 40 feet. But to accommodate future traffic, it needs to be about 116 feet. So, for that reason, we recommended that we replace that bridge for the hydraulics. And then it extends the life of the bridge. So, it's kind of hard to build upon the existing bridge. You get two structures with two different lifespans, maintenance issues, constructability issues, stuff like that. So, that was our recommendation. And then we did some environmental studies. I'm going to let Jennifer talk about that.
So, for the first phase, we just did an overall site assessment. Went out and did some little bit of fieldwork. So, we did wetland delineation, ordinary high watermark there under the bridge for the bridge work. So, obviously, we're not doing any permitting now. We'll wait until the very, very end when you get construction funding for that. But we'll get everything set up for that in the next phase. We did not find any wetlands, a lot of riparian, but no wetlands. So, we'll be talking mainly about impacts to the channel itself. And with that would come, you know, the typical things that we do. So, we'll design in bank stabilization and some of those treatments that we would do under the bridge to stabilize the banks. And then, as I'm sure you all know, there's abundant bird habitat out there. There's rookery right there. There's eagles upstream, there's roosts downstream. So, we'll just make sure that we watch that. And as we, you know, approach the final set of plans, we'll get plans and specs and coordinate with CPW if necessary on things like that. And that's how far we've gotten to date. So, more to come.
As Dan said, you know, a large part of this project is in the Pooter River 100-year floodplain. So, a large part of the project was focused on looking at how do we protect the roadway and design it to be resilient and pass flows so that it's not constantly overtopping. The project is located in the 100-year floodplain. We'd looked at a number of floods that have been documented over the years. And it's, I can't remember, 5 has overtopped four times since 1980. And looking at that data, it topped, it overtopped somewhere between the 10 and the 25-year event. So, what we're looking at doing as part of this project was ensuring that the roadway is built in a sustainable and resilient way, providing an appropriate level of overtopping protection. And also designing the project so it doesn't adversely impact any of the neighbors, which is a requirement from FEMA because it's in a regulatory floodplain. So, we started the project with making a 2D model of existing conditions and then looked at over 32 different alternatives. And to try and figure out what was the best solution for the roadway. The different alternatives looked at larger bridges, levees, culverts, overbank grading, and then some sort of combination of those different elements. So, what we came up with in the long term, in the final proposed alternative, our preferred alternative was to provide 25-year protection. So, if we were to construct a project like this, what we'd do is raise the road. We'd have four 3x20 box culverts underneath the road, kind of towards the south end there, about halfway to Whitesal. And then, like Dan said, expanding the bridge to 240 feet wide. As part of this, we'll also look at, with this particular alternative, the road will still overtop in in events higher than a 25-year event. So, we'll look at how do we protect the road so it's resilient, so it doesn't wash out in like a 100-year event? We've done similar designs to this in places like Boulder County. And it's drastically reduced the project cost. And we felt that because we have an alternative route at Whitesal, that we could get away with providing 25-year protection as opposed to 100-year protection at this location. And then this is just a quick screen grab from the 2D model showing the flow patterns during the 25-year event.
All right. So, recommendations overall, the team has done a very extensive survey. We have pages and pages of documents that if anyone ever wants to read them are available. However, we just wanted to give you a brief summary on where we're at. The J U B team did meet with staff in order to finalize these recommendations. We are proposing the 25-year storm event, which would be a 240-foot bridge with four box culverts. The horizontal alignment further closer to the river will be determined in the next phase as we get further into design. We just need a little bit more information from future stakeholders and as well as doing some additional public engagement in the next phase of final design for us to kind of finalize that alignment. And the project will also include rebuilding Harmony Road. We're proposing that this project be constructed in phases just based on our CIP and in order to be good stewards. So, the project would tie into Timnith Parkway on the north side at Cornhusk. Build out the Harmony Road intersection, build out the bridge, and then tie down very quickly back to existing. This will provide us our existing capacity that we need for the future year buildouts of adjacent developments, as well as our projected Harmony Road traffic in a cost-effective manner. Later, we could come back in with south of the bridge to Whitesal Street and do the additional road raising project, which would also include shifting the road over at that future date. But by breaking the project out into phases, we don't have to accomplish this all at once. We don't need those additional lanes further to the south for traffic-related reasons, as well as, and the floodplain, because of the rate at which the water flows over the Cache Leputer, if we did have a flooding event, in the past, it hasn't taken out County Road 5. It does get wet, but because of the speed of the water, it's not washing it out at this time. As far as next steps for our schedule, we are currently in our alternatives analysis phase. That is wrapping up. We are planning to move to final design and I'll be coming to you guys with a future work order sometime in April or May. We also have the upcoming public engagement effort for this project as well as others. So, we'd like to formally announce we're having a transportation project fair on May 12th. This project will be featured as well as other projects where we'll have role plots. So, if you guys want to talk hydraulics with Jameis, you're more than welcome to come. Following that, we will hopefully, pending construction availability and obviously CIP budgeting, we'd be anticipating going to construction with this project as early as 2027, which would meet the terms of some of the agreements from adjacent developments. Questions, thoughts?
Yeah. Could you speak to the bridge component? I know contracts aren't let, money's not approved, but I'm thinking that the old bridge has to be torn down prior to the new bridge being built. So, County Road 5 essentially will be closed for some period of time during that teardown buildout, correct?
Correct. While we could phase construction, the construction timeframe could potentially double or triple as well as costs. It would, because we do have alternative routes with Whitesal. From a cost perspective, it would make a lot of sense to close south of County Road 5. Let's rip the Band-Aid off and get it done. So.
Right. I mean.
Six months?
Any idea timeframe?
Six months.
Six months?
Six months? Just for the bridge?
Yeah. Just for the bridge, six months?
Targeting.
Right. Got it. Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Great idea. Let's close it.
I suppose I'd be interested in, and we don't have to go through it now, but looking at the background on the three alternatives and understanding the one that's recommended, you know, how that varies in terms of cost and just kind of what those trade-offs were and having a better understanding of that.
So, with the 100-year event, just to keep a very high level, we would need about eight box culverts to raise the road up. The bridge stays the same in each of the alternatives. And you can feel free to correct me when I'm wrong at any point. 100-year alternative, it required eight box culverts. The 25-year event required four box culverts. And the 10-year event required.
I believe two.
Two, two or three box culverts. So, there was just trade-offs and costs associated with those events. I believe the 100-year option further raised up the road and then as well as, I think it was additional $2 million in cost? We can get back with you on that number for the exact thing. The reason that the team decided on the 25-year event was just due to the fact that it kind of balanced out the cost implications. And then we do have an alternative route. The team's also considering doing like revetment along the sides in order to further protect the road. So, that way, in case there was like a flooding event, it would probably be closed for a period of a couple of days. But we wouldn't experience washouts.
Also, Kim, just to clarify, it becomes a little misleading because they provide 25-year protection. It's that, that particular storm, it's a probability that it's going to happen, that there's a 1 in 25 chance it could happen this year. When we looked at all the available data going back to 1980, had we have these improvements here, it wouldn't have overtopped once since 1980. So. I don't rem, I think 2013 was, may have been, may have exceeded the, no, it would have protected it in the 2013 flood as well because it was not a 25-year event. So.
The bridge, I believe, stayed dry in that event. The road overtops further to the south. So, and then the other thing, just not to get weird with the data and whatever, but when people talk about 25-year storm events, we're talking about a regional 25-year, like we need snow melt up in the mountains in order to generate the amount of flow. If it's a 25-year event for a very brief period of time, just over Timnith, that's not the type of storm event that we're talking about.
Yeah, it's over the entire Pooter River Basin.
Yes. So, quite a significant event.
By changing the configuration further west than the current road, is that going to have implications in terms of, do we need to acquire additional right-of-way? Will there be acquisitions?
That is the conversations. So, with choosing the 25-year storm events, we can then like decide kind of where we want to put that horizontal alignment. There's only a very small portion. Obviously, Harmony Road is where it is, Timnith Parkway is where it is, the bridge is where it is. There's a portion of the road that we need to kind of lock in. So, we need to have further conversations with both of the adjacent owners to determine what that cost would be and best minimize and mitigate those costs. But we want to do that in the next phase of design.
I do have another question.
Go ahead.
Yeah. At one point, there was some thought that maybe there would be movement towards the land that's been dedicated as a park. Is that not the case anymore in the preferred alignment?
Oh, it's through that. We are widening at the bridge, we are widening to the east.
Okay.
And then after, then it can swoop away from the river. The reason we're trying to get a little bit away from the river is in order to create a more resilient river corridor and a more resilient roadway. So, but at the bridge, we also want to cross where it's perpendicular.
Right.
So, at that point, we need.
Well, and farther to the south, you need to move away from the river. So, you don't encroach when you do expand the lanes there.
Exactly. Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly how much we shift, we want to balance out costs a little bit as we get into the next phase of design after we've now determined hopefully what storm event we're kind of moving forward with in that direction.
Right. So, with the preferred design, do you have an idea yet as to how much of the dedicate, the land that was supposedly for a park will be left? Or how much of it is going to be used for the, for the bridge?
I don't have an exact number off the top of my head, but the road is widening out pretty significantly. I can get back with you on.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's still enough land there to eventually be a public park or not? Maybe not. I don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, we can look into that a little bit further.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Did any of this analysis or will any of the future work look at the bike path connectivity through there and what that's going to look like?
Yes. So, the project ultimately will have trails on both sides of it. In the interim configuration, we would probably build a 10-foot trail on the west side of the project down to that north property line to tie into future development at that location. The bridge, however, would be set up for that 10-foot wide trails on both sides in addition to having bike lanes.
That, the current path through there is unusable usually for, you know, a month or two out of the year.
Ah, yes. And then we are going to look into maybe trying to do that. We do have some constrictions with heights and the, you know, trying to get it tied back into Harmony. But if there's an opportunity to make that adjustment, we can try to make that better.
That'd be awesome. Counsel, any other questions? All right. Thank you, everyone, for the update. We appreciate your work on this and for bringing us to speed. Squishy me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Shall we then move on to a discussion of natural medicine regulations? Ms. Graves?
Yeah. So, this work session is your opportunity to explore how we're going to regulate natural medicine in the town. And Carolyn, myself, and Lindsay are tag teaming this. So, Carolyn will start us off.
Okay. Thank you. So, first of all, we wanted to give you just a little update about the legal why we're here. So, as you might know, this all started in November 2022 when there was a citizens' initiative for voters to put Proposition 122 onto the ballot. In light of that legislation, the town of Timnith is now proactively addressing its land use policies to address the potential integration of natural medicine facilities into the community. So, this presentation will outline key considerations and proposed actions, including different scenarios for setbacks and zoning restrictions to obtain your feedback and to assure ensure appropriate placement and regulation of these facilities. So, Proposition 122 had kind of two main components. The first one was decriminalizing personal usage of certain, what they call, natural medicines. They're plant-based psychedelic substances. And by personal use, that means for individuals over the age of 21 only. It does not permit selling these items, but you can, it does allow for limited amounts of personal growth to a limited area. It also allows for personal consumption, transportation within the town, and sharing for no consideration. So, those are items that are now legalized in the state of Colorado, cannot be prohibited by the town. The second piece was that it was looking at creation of a regulatory system for natural medicine facilities. And that has two bases. One is for the natural medicine cultivation facilities, which have to be state regulated and state licensed. And the second piece is for the natural medicine healing centers, which allows for use of these natural medicines in a supervised setting. After Proposition one twenty two, they needed some additional clarification. So there have been three additional legislative pieces passed to add more information about these. And one of them was on a Bell twenty three two ninety in May twenty twenty three, which is known as the Natural Medicine Regulation Legalization Act. And that's what set forth the licensing requirements for facilitators of the natural medicine healing centers. And the licensing is under the Department of Regulatory Agencies of the state. It also plays certain business regulation requirements on healing centers, cultivators and testing facilities. And those are set forth under the Department of Revenue. So additional legislation in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four made some additional clarifications and allowed for the licensing of healing centers. Local governments. So that gets you to, well, first of all, just a quick clarification, a healing center. Those are the centers where they do allow for use of these currently two chemicals, psilocybin and psilocin, undersupervised use of a licensed healer. Okay, so what is the role that the town can play? Local governments cannot prohibit healing centers within their boundaries, nor can they prohibit cultivation facilities. But you can regulate the time, place and manner under your zoning and land use authority. And as long as those restrictions that you place on them are reasonable. So towns up and down, you know, the state have been looking at what regulations they want to put in place that are limited to that time, place and manner restrictions of the healing centers and the cultivation facilities. So as of January one twenty twenty five, state licensing for natural medicines in fact, and local jurisdictions don't issue the licenses but can enforce their own regulations. And when someone applies for a permit, the state will call you and say, you know, is it consistent with your regulations? Then if the application meets the state and local requirements, the state can issue a license. Local approval is not required, but the businesses have to comply with your regulations.
So currently, our code doesn't ha is silent on natural healing centers and natural medicine. So that's the purpose of this. Like, where do we want to go with the restrictions? Carolyn covered this a little bit, but so a healing center is defined as a facility that is licensed to provide supervised administration of natural medicine to individuals. So these healing centers are designed to be a safe environment for the therapeutic use of plant based medicines under the guidance of trained professionals. And then a cultivation facility refers to a licensed establishment where the natural medicine products are cultivated, processed and prepared for distribution. So it's the state law regulates these pretty comprehensively and has set up rules for things such as background checks, security standards, waste disposal, sanitation and safety, transport of materials, testing, manufacturing procedures, record keeping, inventory management and so on. So we do want to be clear that natural medicine healing centers differ significantly from cannabis retailers and their purpose, regulation and operation. So healing centers focus again on the therapeutic use under professional guidance, often in clinical or wellness settings rather than direct retail sales to consumers. So state law requires that natural businesses be no less than one thousand feet from the property line of childcare centers, preschools, elementary, middle, junior or high schools or residential childcare facilities using a direct pedestrian route. So and then beyond that, the state law says that local governments may reasonably regulate time, place and manner. And so we thought, so even if we don't prescribe a setback, that state one thousand foot setback will be required. So we've crafted several different scenarios to walk you through. And because healing centers operate much like therapy offices, we wanted to start by regulating them similar to medical and dental offices and clinics. So this use is allowed in residential mixed use, commercial mixed use, business, neighborhood, commercial, community, commercial and regional commercial. And so Lindsay has mapped out what this would look like if we allowed them in these zone districts with the thousand foot setbacks. And so she can walk you through this.
Sure. So the next few slides are kind of just taking us through a few different scenarios where we discuss potential zoning restrictions. All of them do have the same one thousand foot setback from schools and childcare facilities. So here are existing zones that prohibit that allow medical and dental offices and clinics. So in under that scenario, we'll call scenario one, areas in the green would be permitted for healing centers. That comes out to six hundred and ninety five acres. Thirteen point six four percent of the town would be open to healing centers under the scenario one. In scenario two, we have removed a few of those zoning districts.
Yeah. So we went ahead and removed residential mixed use and neighborhood commercial. So residential mixed use is predominantly for residential uses with some supportive commercial uses integrated. And then neighborhood commercial is for just small scale commercial uses that are kind of placed in predominantly residential areas. So things like daycare facilities. So we thought those kind of were the two most obvious to remove if we wanted to go a little stricter.
So in scenario two, again, looking at the areas in green that would permit permit the healing centers. This would encompass five hundred and seventy four point three four acres. Approximately eleven point two six percent of the town would be open to healing centers in this scenario. All right. Restricting the zoning a little bit further in scenario three. This is limiting operation to the same zones where medical facilities are currently allowed with the exception of the residential mixed use district, neighborhood, commercial and commercial mixed use. We see three hundred and seventy five point seven eight acres would be open to healing centers. Seven point three seven percent of the town in this scenario. And then lastly, under our most restrictive scenario here, we would only permit healing centers in the regional commercial zone. With those school setbacks, you can see that that limits the area that is open to healing centers to one hundred and ninety six point seven acres, a three point eight six percent of the town. And just to give you kind of a summary of those four scenarios here, we can see that as we move from least restrictive to most restrictive, we are eliminating sections of the town that would be permitting this use.
And this is obviously a snapshot in time as this is what's currently zoned and incorporated within our boundary. So next is cultivation facilities, and these characteristically are similar to manufacturing. So those are only permitted within the industrial zone district. And so this one was a little more simple.
So once more, we are still taking into account the thousand foot setbacks from schools or any childcare facilities, limiting the operation of any cultivation facilities solely to the industrial zoning district. That would permit this use in one hundred and twelve point one five acres of town, only two point two percent would be open to cultivation facilities in scenario one. We did consider some additional restrictions as far as a setback from residential property lines. So again, this is a snapshot in time of all plotted residential parcels that currently exist within the town. In this scenario, you see that the setbacks do encroach a little bit upon those industrial zones. So we are looking at ninety six point four three acres. One point eight nine percent of the town would be open to cultivation facilities in scenario two. And then scenario three, we are just expanding those residential property line setbacks to a thousand feet. Still looking at only the industrial zoning district. And in this scenario, one point five seven percent of the town would be open to cultivation facilities, just under eighty acres. And here we kind of have a summary of those three scenarios as it pertains to the cultivation facilities. And then some other considerations that we have discussed would be potentially limiting the number of healing centers that could operate within a certain distance of one another. Or also regulating the time, place and manner. We would certainly be able to limit the hours of operation of these facilities.
So that kind of concludes the the various scenarios we mapped out. And I think what would be really helpful for us is for you to kind of tell us where you want to want to be on that continuum so that we can then go and draft code language that aligns with that. So thoughts, questions?
Thanks. You know, before maybe we solicit counsel input on on the various scenarios. It may all open up to our planning commission members if there are any questions from the group there.
Um, I mean, you'd need a court to determine for sure, but consistent with past cases, I think that they are reasonable restrictions. Yes.
All right. Anything else from questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Wood.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. I think that the rules that have been proposed by staff make perfect sense, and I think that's definitely something to look at. But something that is in the main act, the law that they passed, there's some things that are there. They're quite vague. They're really not regulating mushrooms per se. They're regulating psilocybin. And what they don't talk about is how much is too much. There are some studies and so forth, mostly in Europe. There's a good study in New York that says how much is a lethal dose? How much is a dose that that is low, medium or high? But it really doesn't focus on on what's the 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 minimum. And what they don't really say is there's over two hundred species of mushrooms that that have been identified with psilocybin and of medicinal or pharmaceutical use. But they don't really say, what about those regular edible mushrooms that have trace amounts of psilocybin in them? In the parts per million, parts per billion, even parts per trillion. And you might be surprised that there's over ten thousand forms of mushrooms. And and it doesn't just focus on mushrooms, any kind of fungus. So, for example, blue cheese, the blue in blue cheese is a mushroom. There's mushrooms you can go down to Walmart and buy, the white ones or the brown ones. There's fancier mushrooms that are sold at, you know, natural grocers or Whole Foods. Some of them do have trace amounts of psilocybin in them. Even though they're not regulated as natural medicines, they do have some psilocybin. So what I worry about is the enforcement. There's a great mushroom Hazel Dell down down just off the Windsor exit where they sell mushrooms. They've got a farm stand. They certainly don't sell pharmaceutical mushrooms. They sell edible mushrooms of a great variety, some of which do have trace amounts. Are we going to be fighting the farmers, trying to regulate something that that maybe we don't want to regulate? I think that the the law itself has some issues. They have appointed a fifteen member advisory board to look at it. I've written to the Dora folks to or Dola folks to see what what rules they may put out. Because some states, the state of Oregon, has put out some rules very similar. They're still divided about what the lowest levels should be. If it's a tenth of a of a part per million, is that okay? I just don't want us to be in a situation where the police chief has to go down to the farm stand and say, hey, you can't sell those mushrooms. Because it's really hard to tell. The testing is fairly elaborate. And there's already some differences of opinion between federal law and state law on those issues. So it's something to be aware of. It shouldn't hold us from establishing these guidelines. But I think as we go down the road, we should be aware that enforcement may be difficult.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. And Chief, up until one twenty two passed, essentially any possession of psilocybin was was unlawful. In your experience, have you seen law enforcement raiding these farm stands or or the farmer's market to get the shiitake mushroom that has one one trillionth of a percent or is in has that been an issue that you've seen?
In both of these, the healing centers and the cultivation centers, I just want to make sure I understand none. Neither one of these like marijuana centers, there's no direct to consumer sales, right? So in the case of like, let's say, healing centers, does the the like the clinical psychologist, are they the ones that are in possession? They give them to the patient? Is that the case?
So they're not required to be clinical psychologists. There's no. That's fair. I'll just clarify. There's no educational requirement, but there is a to be a licensed healer. You do have to have a practical requirement of two hundred hours of practical experience or education, I believe. So they're just starting, this is such a new program, they're just starting to certify those individuals. But you do have to be in the presence of that individual and you're required to stay on site until you're no longer experiencing and under the influence of the substance. So you're not allowed to purchase it and take it off site. You're also not allowed to leave the facility until you are no longer under the influence.
Okay.
And the healing centers are only allowed to have a certain quantity on site. And then it's also important to note that a clinical psychologist perhaps who has a practice and wants to integrate natural medicine can do so. So like these natural medicine can be layered on to other business types.
Okay. And then so like a cultivation facility, where would if they're allowed to grow, where would they grow and go if they're not allowed to sell it? Like where, what kind of businesses does that go to then?
Mostly to the healing centers. So the healing centers are required to purchase their supply from licensed cultivators.
Okay, okay. So we could so we could potentially have, say, a cultivation facility, but not necessarily a healing center in town. And they could be or the or the other way. Okay. Thank you.
Couple of concerns. And again, not that it it changes the direction of what we're going to do here, but with the limited scope of this, my concern would be with anything that needs a ample amount of hours, whether it's CE credits or anything along those lines, there's always a website that you can buy a bundle pack for forty nine ninety five and get your ample CE credit. So that just the administrator, you know, the administration of this, I think, to Planning Commissioner Wood's point is going to be tough. The other piece is how is The other piece is how is somebody trained to determine whether or not somebody is still under the influence? I mean, alcohol stays in your system. I don't know how long this stays in your system. But is it someone's best judgment to say that you've consumed X and you look okay, so you're good to go? Right? I mean, and then then they're driving on our streets in our residential neighborhoods, so on and so forth. So that would be a concern to me, too, is who's actually monitoring this if there really is no license or degree associated with who's administering it? So um, just my concerns.
And to clarify, there is a license. So if this is really, the state is gonna be regulating this. So they're gonna be looking at what the experience of the person is, and are they, do they have the qualifications to meet that license? The state, I expect, will not be going out to look at individual cases. So it is then that licensed facilitator that's gonna be making that determination. Beyond that, I don't know if there's additional requirements about how you determine where they are on, you know.
And when we are looking at the cultivation facilities, uh, there was the thousand feet from the residential that you that you put on there. Now, there was not the recommendation necessarily, the thousand-foot setback for healing centers. Is there a reason why there was a difference or a look at that? I just wondered why there was a difference or if that was a possibility.
That that is a possibility, yeah. We didn't include it, but certainly that we could layer that on as well.
I just didn't know if that was allowed by zoning, but I just wanted to check.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe let's start the discussion with the cultivation. Uh, the the recommendation was that this only be allowed in industrial zones. And then there were three scenarios with various setbacks. The most restrictive was the one thousand-foot setback from residential property lines. And I guess I just toss it out to counsel. Um, you know, among those those three options, um, is is there a sense of where individuals would land?
Well, I I have a question. Uh, there's still a little blue-green spot down here near Harmony. Um, what property is that? Is that the Mill Brother property? It's across from Walker, so that would be the Mill Brothers. I mean, that's down. So that's still the largely the Mill Brother property and and beyond.
All right, Logan, can you scroll down to the the comparison table for this question from the mayor? Thank you. So this is what you're asking there?
Yeah, amongst one, two, and three, do folks have thought?
Yeah, my my thought is for for the cultivation. I I mean, part part of the problem is I don't know what the regulations are with regard to like, I know psilocybin, uh, the psilocybin mushrooms in Florida, where I went to uh college and graduate school. They predominantly grow um almost exclusively in cow manure. And I would presume that to grow it in in an industrial setting, uh, you might create a similar kind of environment. And I I just worry about if it's close to residential, what kind of regulations are in place with regard to smells and et cetera that come from a a growth facility? Um, and if you did have odors emanating, you should certainly wouldn't want it near any residential area. Although we get plenty of wafting our our way at certain times of the year from the sheep farms, but that's another story. Yeah, so I have a a concern about the potential for odor. So I my feeling would be the most restrictive. Um, and it still gives quite a bit of area um to house it. It's not that different, really.
Mayor Proton?
Yeah, um, first of all, I I just wanna thank staff for putting this together. This is awesome. I appreciate the table. Um, I I could definitely go for uh two or three in this scenario. Um, I definitely wanna set it back from residential properties in some way. Um, so I I would definitely support either the five hundred or a thousand foot. Um, thinking about our residents and thinking about, um, you know, thinking about where kids play, thinking about how we enjoy our open spaces. I think I would uh look to a thousand feet, but um, so I'd I'd go most restrictive. But I am open to staff uh thinking about why this might not be the best idea, but I would look to number three.
Yes, I'll I'll echo that, too. For all the same reasons, and also I think it's a lot lot easier to start as restrictive and then come to find that there is extensive monitoring, all the right things are in place down the road, and we could always change it in the opposite direction. So I would vote to go um three.
Um, I agree for all the reasons everybody's mentioned, especially some of those unknowns that Bill mentioned as far as um smells, sounds, um, different things that might be um located around these facilities. And again, there's not that much of a difference between the amount of area. Um, so I would feel comfortable going with um the number three.
Uh, I also would support three. Um, the state is still putting all this together, and I would much rather start restrictive, see what things are happening in other places, and then find out that maybe the fears aren't as bad as maybe think people think they might be as opposed to do it the other way and have a and try to put the genie back in the bottle, so to speak. So um, I think we're in agreement that we prefer the more restrictive, the most restrictive on cultivation. Can you pull up the chart on the healing centers? You know, I I think part of this affects um how much of the Harmony corridor ultimately is subject to this. And so that that might be a good place for discussion, whether um at the most restrictive, it would essentially just be Ladera that these could operate. At the least restrictive, it it could, you know, be up and down Harmony. So I'm, maybe I'll start with Councilmember Lake and go this way, get people's thoughts.
Um, so looking at all the different scenarios, I'm my initial thought is to definitely not allow it in residential areas. So that that was kind of where I I first went. Beyond that, um, I I think I'd have to kind of look at those maps again, I guess, is to kind of really see. Part of it is is I also had the same concerns about who's defining whether people are still under the influence and where are people going to be driving. And without us having that information, it's I I would initially go to the most restrictive for this as well, just to err on the side of caution, knowing that we can um expand it down the road if we so chose to. Um, but kind of keeping it, I think, I think option four basically limited it to that Ladera area um for now, and I would be comfortable with that, but I could also be persuaded for two or three as well.
Yeah, I will um, I'll agree, I think, four um for a lot of the same reasons. That being said, Ladera might be one of our most um widespread uh um areas for a lot of people. So don't even feel comfortable with having it located in that facility either. Um, but knowing that we can't fully restrict it, I think four would be um my vote.
Yeah, so uh if it were four, um, would it not al- also include uh the Costco area? Isn't that zone regional commercial as well? So it wouldn't be just Ladera, would, I mean, I don't know if there are any lots still available.
Yeah, it would include Gateway North.
So, yeah, the Walmart uh area as well as Ladera, as well as the Costco area. So it's not just Ladera. Uh, again, I think the the notion until we have a better sense of how this is go- how well this is gonna be regulated and and more of the details, having it be more restrictive but allowed, uh, seems like the right way to go. And then, you know, uh, once we uh, once it plays out and we know a little bit more, maybe it would make sense to broaden broaden the area. I mean, people that um do this are, um, they're not gonna just go online and get a forty-nine-dollar certificate that says they've done their two hundred hours. They, to do this, you're gonna have to be pretty serious. You're gonna have to be insured. Um, there's liability associated with it. I'm I'm betting there will be regulations about what uh standard therapeutic doses are and what the timeframe uh typically is for most people taking taking this. So I I feel reasonably confident that 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 they're to to do this as a a business. People will be responsible about it. But that being said, um, until we have a better picture of all that, since this is all new, I would opt for the most restrictive and then look at it down the road uh as possibly expanding it once we have a better uh better idea. And I'm sure there will be um experts and Avisi ad- but C groups that will uh have some expertise and be be able to educate us more uh further down the line. So I'm for four.
Mayor Proton?
So Logan, what would happen if somebody wanted to start a healing center, say, in Harmony, and our zoning doesn't allow? What would the process be for that business?
Um, so if they wanted to do it in the Harmony corridor?
Yeah, and we are number four.
So we would just look at it, are you um looking to start it in a a zone that permits the use? No, so it doesn't really move forward. Like, there's no avenue for them.
Hard no, so they can, there nothing would come before counsel, nothing would, okay, okay.
They could apply for rezoning, though, correct?
They could. It would need to be supported by the plan.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Didn't you also say that um the state licensing would be checking to make sure before they issue a license to a healing center that it met the local zoning requirements?
Yes, that's one of the official steps.
So the state would block them from a license.
What would be like, I just wanted to see what the process would be. So, yeah, I think at this point, being cautious first. Um, I do think um healing centers like this, you know, different forms of care for different people in the future is necessary. But I I think being cautious first is the way to go. So I will support scenario four with the idea that future councils may wanna take a look at this.
I'll support scenario four. I'd ask uh staff to to move in that direction. You also mentioned some of the other considerations. I am supportive of restricting uh use to like weekday daytime uh type stuff. You know, I think that, um, you know, for some of the concerns, driving that other stuff, uh, having having this occur at a time when the rest of other uh legitimate medical professions generally, you know, if your dentist is gonna be open, I might, I think, a parallel to there. Uh, this is not an emergency room. It's it's not an emergency healing session. It's, you know, something that that is planned and and stuff like that. So I I think that makes sense. Um, I also liked the recommendation of a spacing requirement um for the same reasons that we don't want for gas stations uh at the same intersection. I I think it would make sense, especially if we're going to um limit this to kind of the I twenty-five in Harmony. Um, you know, I I don't think we would want ten of them in in that small area. Um, that that would just, you know, not not be a, it would go against diversity of of kind of what's commercially available there. So uh, those are my thoughts. I don't know if anyone else concur- concurs in that.
Yeah, I I I like the um the set hours and uh and the spacing requirement. The only caution I would have is, uh, it would sure be nice to have some expertise input. I'd hate to have hours so restrictive that effectively you're blocking it from happening because the person couldn't be certified as being not under the influence. So I would be a little cautious about setting those hours um because you you may create a problem that you're trying to avoid. So I think reasonable hours, yes, but getting some um expert input on expectations of what therapeutic under the influence and, you know, therapeutic doses and how long they're under the influence might help guide setting the hours. So that's that's my only caution there.
Um, Ms. Graves, you have what you need from us to move forward?
I believe so, yeah. And I just wanna give a shout out to Lindsay. She put together this whole story map, and they're pretty, pretty impressive, so.
Thank you.
Looks good. Thank, thank you all for your work. Uh, do we have any idea when we might see this? I guess it'll first go to uh Planning Commission, right?
Mm-hmm. I think we were targeting May. When's the moratorium? It's July, so May-ish. Okay. To be determined, but soon-ish.
It gives us an idea. All right, that's good. Um, Counsel, if it's all right, we'll adjourn and then plan to reconvene at six-ten. Um, I know we have some folks here for presentations. We'll make sure we get them all in here. We'll be back at six-ten. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, March 11th, Timneth Town Council meeting. Ms. Peters-Garcia, will you take the role?
Yes. Mayor Robert Oxmacher?
Present.
Mayor Protem Luke Wagner?
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Holt?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Jenkins?
Present.
Councilmember Lisa Lake?
Here.
Excellent, we are all present and accounted for. Counsel, are there any requests to amend the agenda this evening? I see none, and we will move on to item three, which is presentation of our police promotions and officers swearing in. Can I invite the chief to join me in the well here?
Thanks, Mayor. Counsel?
Testus.
We'll try to get organized here. Detective Morgan, Wes Fuller, Cody Lloyd, Braden, Kane, Chris, Roger, and Luke. Mayor and counsel, it's my distinct pleasure to have you swear them in this evening. We have a detective, a newly appointed detective. Typically, at graduation of the police academy, I swear them in, but I thought it was notable for a ceremony such as this to just make this auspicious occasion solidified. So I would like to introduce the officers. Standing to, to my left is Chad Morgan. Chad lives in Timneth with his wife and two kids, Emily, Addie, and Matt. Chad has been in law enforcement for 24 years, 16 years with the Department of Wildlife, three years with CSUPD, and now four years with Timneth. Chad grew up in this area and worked his career in the area. And speaking of all things furry, Chad knows what they are. Wes Fuller, Wes is returning to a career in law enforcement and brings previous experience as a corporal with CSUPD, a reserve deputy sheriff with LCSO, a school district supervisor, and a program administrator for Pooter School District and Laramie County School District in Wyoming. Outside of work, he enjoys farm life and time with his family. Today, he's got Kaylee and his children, Ben and Katie. Next to him, Cody Lloyd. Cody Lloyd is a native of Colorado. He's served as a Loveland Police youth cadet for nearly five years, working with various leadership positions. He worked as a lifeguard for three years and served as a community service officer with both the Estes Park Police Department and Loveland Police Department for almost four years collectively. When he was not at work, he enjoys spending time outside with his fiancee, Caitlin, and his dog Ranger. Proper order, Cody. Cody looks forward to fulfilling his dreams as a police officer and is excited to make a positive impact in this community. Cody and Wes are in the FTO program currently. They will graduate in May. Braden Richens has been hired in 2024. Braden is the oldest of four siblings and grew up in California. After finishing his degree, he and his bride Lindsay decided to return to Colorado and start a family. After our second child, he left the sheriff's department, Laramore County, and he worked there for 10 years and now is a member of our department. Kane Salazar, Kane was born and raised in northern Colorado. Kane has always admired law enforcement. Now he continues his career with the Timneth Police Department. He does so with dedication, integrity, and the unwavering support of his wife Courtney and their son Knox Crosby. Kane wants cowboy hats. Chris Manholland, affectionately called The Hair. Chris grew up in Fort Collins where he met his wife Emma, and they have been married for almost 15 years. He joined the Army and was stationed at Fort Bragg with the 82nd Airborne Division. He, and he served in the Afghanistan War in 2012. He has two children, Iza, is that right? Isla, Isla and Gunner, and he enjoys spending time with his wife and children. Roger Legwe. Roger was born in Orange, California. He grew up in the mountains of Southern California. Roger and his wife Ashley met in 2010 while working at Disneyland and married in 2015. In 2018, they moved to Colorado and had two boys, Noah and Ethan. Prior to being hired by Timneth Police, Roger worked for the Laramore County Sheriff's Department as a 911 dispatcher for four and a half years and a part-time range safety officer at Liberty Firearms Institute. Luke Albrook, I can't believe I'm going to read this. Luke Albrick, Time Magazine's 2025 Most Attractive Male. God bless you, Nicole. As five years of jail deputy experience and now adding a year of patrol experience, Luke is married to Nicole Albrook and has two children, Riley, age four, and Asher, who's 21 months.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, officers, detective. Thank you, families, for being here and supporting your, your loved ones. You know, this is a town that cares very deeply about its safety. And because of that, the citizens demanded, council approved, this 24/7 police department, this brand-new police building, and the effort over the last, you know, several years to continue to hire and staff. And we are now in an incredible place, and I am so happy that all of you are here, that you have chosen to dedicate yourself to this fantastic town of Timneth that we all love so much. As you continue your job out there, I ask you every day, please go out there and make your family proud. Every day, be smart in what you do and remember the trust of our community. You have earned the trust of our community. It is there, but it is also something that is easily broken when not taken care of. But we, council, town, the entire community appreciate each and every one of you and thank you for the choice that, that you've made to protect our community. We'll now move on to the swearing in. We will do this first one. I'll have everybody do your name, and then we will read the rest of the oath together. So first, I state your name. We'll do the rest together. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States in the state of Colorado and the charter ordinances and regulations of the town of Timneth. That I will faithfully perform the duties of my office. So help me God. Thank you, officers, thank you, detective.
Good evening, gentlemen. Cheers. Don't block anyone.
And then I'd invite any officers, did you have your family here? The chief and I would be happy to do a quick picture with you and your family before we move on as well. We will now move on to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the community to speak on matters related to the town. If an item is scheduled for a hearing... If an item is scheduled for a hearing, we ask people to wait and speak on that. This evening, we do not actually have anything that has a public hearing on it. And so anyone that we should speak tonight should do so during the public comment section. Public comment is limited to three minutes. It looks like we have one person signed up this evening. So Mr. Jason Martindale. Yeah, good evening, Mr. Martindale. I think you may have heard that there's a request to continue the the item this evening. We'll, of course, take that request up when we get to that agenda item. And I know that you had submitted some materials, which was provided by Ms. Steffel, and we've all reviewed those. But with that, I offer you three minutes and welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council and staff. My name is Jason Martindale, and I am the owner of Allison Estates and Countryside Estates. I appreciate the ability to speak tonight regarding eminent domain for an easement assigned to Allison Estates located on the Hall's property. I have spent an immense amount of time preparing and submitting factual and pertinent information prior to this meeting on Friday, March seventh, in hopes the staff and council could review to further understand and finally deny eminent domain in its entirety on this easement. The developers and their attorneys have been lying and misdirecting the facts and truth for the eminent domain. They have stated previously in the January fourteenth meeting that my easement was the last element necessary to move forward and record the plat. This is a lie and not true. And in fact, they need four or five other easements or agreements to move forward with their development. The developers will need an easement from Great Western Railway, which has an existing easement consisting of one hundred and twenty-one feet. They will need an easement from Excel Energy next to pressurize gas lines in the right-ofways. Easement from Janiconco, owner of Brent's Ranch, which they will need to go through her property to bring the proposed underdrain down to County Road Forty. They will need a crossing agreement from Sand Dyke Ditch Company. They will also need agreements from both Box Elder Sanitation and Fort Collins Loveland Water District, which has an existing six-inch force main line in the right-ofways. The Metro District is stating the eminent domain is necessary for public improvement, and condemnation can only be granted for public sanitation improvements, including stormwater sewer and sewer improvements. Box Elder already has an existing easement for sanitation, so the only other improvement would be for stormwater. And an underdrain is not the mechanism used for controlling stormwater. As in Exhibit Number Seven on the information and letter I provided to the staff on Friday, prior to this meeting, I included a manual set forth by U.S. Department of Transportation for Urban Drainage Design, Fourth Edition, outlining the guidelines for handling of stormwater using controlled structures such as detention or retention ponds. According to the State of Colorado Department of Water Resources, or the DWR, underdrains are the mechanism used for controlling groundwater. In order to lower or relocate groundwater, Fisher Farm Development would be required to first apply and receive a permit from DWR. The criteria for an underdrain would be to relocate the groundwater back to streams without incurring excessive losses due to being exposed to evaporation or excessive seepage. This is much different than the criteria for stormwater. The real reason for the underdrain is to lower the water table in Fisher Farm Development for the ability to install future basements to maximize profits, which is not a public improvement for public need and does not require an underdrain for the movement of stormwater. Fisher Farm Development can move forward with their project without the use of an underdrain system and developed without basements. They can install detention and retention ponds for the stormwater as outlined in the U.S. Department of Transportation. They can get their recorded plat and can move forward at any time installing the Box Elder sewer lines and Alcoa water line for their project. The biggest hurdle with installing an underdrain will be the impact and effects it will have on irrigation wells and domestic wells on neighboring properties in the area, namely my wells and residence of Timneth Metal Estate Subdivision. In Exhibits Four and Five I submitted on Friday, March seventh, Calvin Miller is the underwater groundwater engineer that completed tests and models in a report that was submitted to the town on Timneth in 2020. He stated that the model shows at least one well in that area not being able to recover and will go dry. He states this is unacceptable. He also states in that report to the developer, the underdrain would have to be moved or redesigned. Why are we here tonight talking about eminent domain on an easement when the bigger risks of an underdrain has already been stated and ignored by the developer? My three irrigation wells were not included in the study, even though I am directly across the street and within the DWR six-hundred-foot guidelines of the study. By excluding my property, it takes away my right to contest or give consent of the underdrain. There has already been nine wells to date of permitted irrigation wells that have completely dried up.
I'll ask you to wrap up.
Yes. In this Timneth Landing subdivision. This cannot happen to my wells or nearby resident wells. This motion for eminent domain must stop. It must not be tabled. It must be decided tonight that there is no reason for support from the council or to town to move forward with eminent domain. The town cannot put current homeowners and landowners at risk with their wells and water sources drying up for an underdrain that is not necessary or in the public's best interest. I put my trust in the council to do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. No one else has signed up, but I'll ask if there's anyone else present who would like to address council for public comments this evening. Does not appear to be anyone, so we will now move on to our consent agenda, which consisted of four items this evening. First, approval of the February twenty-fifth Town Council meetings. Second is Resolution Nineteen, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, a resolution approving a temporary easement with the Larimer County Clerk and Recorder for the placement of a ballot box at forty-seven fifty Signal Tree Drive. Third is Resolution Twenty, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, a resolution approving independent contractor agreement of real estate broker services. And fourth is Resolution Number Twenty-One, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, resolution approving the purchase of office furniture from Office Scape of Denver LLC Doing Business as Slate. Is there any requests to remove an item from the consent agenda? Do not see any. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
I move to approve, excuse me, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nay. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move on to council reports. I'll begin this end with Councilmember Lake.
I just wanted to report that we've had a few applicants for the post committee, and I'll be working with Tom to figure out how we move forward with that selection.
Councilmember Roll.
Yeah, I'm excited to attend the groundbreaking ceremony on Thursday at 2:00 P.M. for Respite Care. So they have the footers in, they're moving right along, and then have a groundbreaking ceremony over at their new location in Ladera on Thursday at two.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Yeah, just a quickie on NFR MPO. As I believe I mentioned previously, there are thirty corridors within the NFR MPO, which encompasses a good bit of Larimer County and parts of Weld County. Of those thirty traffic corridors, only six are, have been considered in the past for projects as their high-use corridors. Harmony was not one of them. It looks like we're making progress getting Harmony designated as, potentially as a seventh and also a potential study for the Harmony I-twenty-five corridor, corridors dual, which might lead at some point in the future to a redesign of that interchange. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Jenkins. Mayor for Tim.
Yep. So we've been making progress in the Old Town Committee. So I think coming up here, we're hopefully going to bring some materials in front of the council for presentation. So I've been working really hard on that. I just want to thank all the community members that have been involved. Thank you, Scott, for your time. Thank you, Aaron. And so, and obviously, thank you, Councilmember Holt. So hopefully, we'll have something here for you guys shortly.
I wanted to extend my gratitude to Councilmember Lake, who pinch-hit for me the other day. I was slated to read at Timneth Elementary and came down deathly ill and was unable to do it. But Councilmember Lake stepped in, and I really appreciated that. So I hope that was a good experience. I wanted to note that we have the grand opening of the Wildwing Park scheduled for April twelfth. So put that on your calendars. That'll be a good event. And then I wanted to wish the Timneth, both boys and girls' basketball teams luck this week. Both have advanced to the grade eight. I believe tomorrow's the next game for each of them. So I wanted them to know that we're rooting for them and wishing them luck. All right, anything else before we move on? Onto our regular business items. Begin with Item Seven A, Resolution Twenty-two, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Weld County for gravel road maintenance and snow removal. Mr. Smith.
Good evening. We present for your consideration this evening Resolution Number Twenty-two, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Weld County for gravel road maintenance and snow removal. Here's a vicinity map, and it's a little hard to see, but it was also included in, it's an exhibit in the actual IGA. But you can see the green highlighted areas. Those are within the town of Timneth, two of which are what we know as the KM properties, KM North and KM South. And Weld County Road Fifteen runs north and south, immediately adjacent to the east side of the KM properties. Timneth annexed to Weld County Road Fifteen with those KM properties. It was several years ago, and I don't know the exact date, but I'm sure someone does. But the half-mile section of Weld County Road Fifteen from Highway Fourteen South is gravel, and it's been very difficult for the town to maintain because we don't have a road grader. And it's just, it's, there's one other small piece of gravel road within the town. But overall, we have less than a mile of gravel road in the community. So it really doesn't justify the acquisition of a $250,000 road grader. So in the past, we have contracted with private contractors to do maintenance on that road. The last estimate we received was $20,000 to do one maintenance run on that road. So that was pretty significant. We have negotiated an IGA with Weld County, and Weld County does this with a lot of communities in Weld County, the smaller towns such as Platteville, for example, where they don't have the resources to really properly maintain the road. So this is not unusual. It's a common practice for Weld County. They have the mile and a half stretch of Weld County Road Fifteen south of our section. So in total, they'll be maintaining a two-mile section of roadway. So they'll just add our section in with theirs as part of their routine maintenance activities. The estimated annual cost is about $2,000. It's actually a little less than that for road grading activities. If we have significant snow removal, that'll be over and above that. But generally, about $2,000 per year. We continue to be responsible for other maintenance items if we have to bring more gravel or road base out there, replace culverts, road signs. That's all, that all continues to be the town of Timneth's responsibility. If the average daily traffic exceeds 200 vehicles per day, we would then be responsible for dust suppression. And I actually think that's a requirement in the state statutes. So the county watches that pretty closely. Staff recommends approval of the resolution. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Council, any questions?
A couple of questions. Is this, I think we received maybe an email from some residents or maybe not residents, but in this, is this the same road that they had talked about? Okay, perfect. I just want to make sure.
Yes, it is. We've had a number of, I'll call them complaints, but inquiries from Weld County residents who have the roadway. The last conversation I had with one of them was much more pleasant after Weld County bladed the road on our behalf.
Perfect, great. I'm glad this is getting resolved. So when we talk about the dust suppressant, sorry, the dust suppressant, and we talk about the 200 vehicles, how are we just going to know that we're going to know it's going to be 200 vehicles out there? And that'll be something that you guys have to go out there and do.
Well, I think, first of all, I think the current ADT on that road is probably around 50 or 75 cars a day. So we're well away from 200 vehicles a day. But I think when we, at some point in the future, start to observe that traffic volumes are increasing, we'll perform an actual traffic count, and that's included in the IGA. Weld County will perform that. The town would reimburse them for those costs. We do traffic counts pretty regularly, and they don't cost very much money. So when we get to the point where we think it might be close to 200, we'll just, we'll do an actual traffic count out there to verify the volume.
Perfect, thank you. And so in terms of snow removal, I noticed in the contract, there's not really any response time. So how will this road have priority? How will Weld County prioritize our road? How will this look compared to other roads that they're doing?
Weld County Road Fifteen is a snow route as identified by the Weld County Snow Removal Policy. Their policy is a little different than ours. We have priority one, two, and three routes and so forth. Weld County generally addresses the worst areas first. They have about 665 miles of snow route throughout the county. Weld County's rather large. So if they have an area of the county that's hit particularly hard, they're going to focus on that first, and then they'll get around to the other roadways. Could be, very well be that Weld County Road Fifteen is a priority because it was hit particularly hard by a certain storm. And they would grade or plow our section of Fifteen right along with their sections. So it'll be one continuous snow removal operation.
Okay. And so if there's, will the town provide any backup to them in any event? Or is it all just going to be on Weld County?
I could see a scenario where we would provide backup on County Road Fifteen, keeping in mind that the town's also probably been dumped on as well. So we would fit that into our normal schedule. It would probably be towards the end of our priority list. We would address the other emergency routes and secondary routes first and then get to Weld County Road Fifteen. But we would certainly be willing and able to provide backup at some point.
Perfect. Thank you.
Certainly.
Any other questions? Well, then is there a motion to approve the resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with Weld County for gravel road maintenance and snow removal?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, begin with discussion, Councilmember Lake.
I have no further comments.
No, I'm in favor of this. Makes perfectly good sense. Be over a hundred years, payback on this at 2,000 a year. So it makes a lot of sense.
I will also support it, and I appreciate Mr. Smith, all the work that went into getting this resolved. I know it's been an ongoing issue. And so thank you for partnering with Weld County and making this happen. Very well. All those in favor of approving the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Nay. All right, resolution carries. Thank you, sir. Now move on to Item Seven B, Resolution Number Twenty-three, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, resolution approving a Town Council waiver for the Timneth Ranch Eighth Filing Subdivision. Mr. Kemper.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As you mentioned, Item Seven B is for consideration of a Town Council waiver for the Timneth Ranch Eighth Filing Replat Number One for rear yard setback standards for the principal buildings located- for rear yard setback standards for the principal buildings located within the multifamily residential zone district. The applicant is Highland Development Services, Inc., and the owner is Hartford Construction LLC. The subjects are blocks 11 through 24 of the Timneth Ranch Eighth Filing Subdivision Replat Number One, excluding Lot 1, Block 12. These lots and blocks are highlighted in blue on the screen. These properties are located east of Schoolhouse Drive, south of Stonebrook Drive, and north of Sugar Creek Drive. The blocks were approved as part of the Timneth Ranch Eighth Filing Final Plat for the development of single-family attached dwellings. The initial approval of the subdivision created this filing in February of 2021. Construction of the development then began in 2023 in accordance with the multifamily residential dimensional standards outlined in the code. In 2024 of last year, the lots subject to the requests were purchased by Hartford Homes, which proposed a building design that differed from the original designed, design contemplated at the time of flatting. As a result, an administrative plat was approved in 2024 to adjust the lot widths of these blocks to accommodate the proposed building type. Again, the subject properties are zoned R4 multifamily residential aligning with the high-density residential mixed-use designation of the comprehensive plan. The town council in certain circumstances may waive dimensional standards contained in the code. The waiver permits specified minor deviations from the code while staying consistent with the intent. In accordance with Table 2.1, this process does not require a public hearing or recommendation from planning commission. Rather, staff has completed its review and of their request and is making the recommendation to town council based on the intent of the code requirements. Per the code, the town council may approve a reduction of a development, deny the reduction. And in the case of more than one waiver request, approve one or more or deny one or more of those requests. Any waiver must meet one or more of the following conditions as well as the review criteria outlined in Section 2.9.15.5. Those conditions are as follows, that the alternative better achieves the stated intent. The intent cannot be achieved by application of the standard in this circumstance. The effect of other standards will be improved by not applying a particular standard. Strict application or unique site features make this standard impractical. And then the criteria in review, that the waiver or the reduction in this case of a development standard is required for the construction of the development project at the density to which the project is entitled with all concessions or other incentives approved for the project. The waiver or reduction in a development standard will not have a specific adverse impact on public health, safety, or the physical environment. And lastly, that the reduction of the standard is necessary because application of the development standards would physically preclude construction of the project otherwise meeting the requirements of the code. So on to the actual waiver request. Per Section 2.9.15, the following standards may be departed from the code. Structure widths and depth limits, setback requirements, design, location, and access to parking, parking ratios, open space requirements, lot coverage limits, screening and landscaping requirements, standards for location and design of mixed-use buildings, and then the applicable harmony corridor design standards in that subject. As you can see, number two, this request is meeting the setback requirements of that, that code. Therefore, the applicant is requesting a reduction of the rear yard setback for all lots within the subject area from 15 feet, which is defined by the R4 Zone District, to six feet to allow for flexibility within the design. The applicant's intent of this modification is to shift the single-family attached buildings closer to the rear lot line, thereby increasing the private front yards to allow for greater utilization of those spaces. While staff has reviewed the waiver request and is generally supportive, concerns have been raised that allowing such a deviation across all blocks could negatively impact the human scale and streetscape of the subdivision. Those blocks of concern being 11, 19, and 20. We can get into that in just a second. Just wanted to point out, per code, the intention of the town in enacting our development standards is to clearly describe the town's vision for its physical development and create a vital cohesive, well-designed community in order to preserve and enhance its character and further the goals identified in our comprehensive plan. It's not explicitly stated, but the intent of minimum setbacks is to create a well-ordered, visually appealing, and functional community. By controlling where the buildings are placed, setbacks can ensure the development aligns with the town's vision for preserving character, enhancing design, and creating a cohesive environment, supporting the goals of the comprehensive plan. So on the screen now is an exhibit that was provided by the applicant, which kind of gives you a visual representation of what this request would actually look like. As you can see, to the left would be the existing setbacks. There is a 15-foot rear yard requirement and a 15-foot setback to the front that is being met by the plot plan to the left. The request would then be to shift that back to allow for up to a minimum of six-foot rear yard setbacks. This is a bit of a unique circumstance within this development to where some of these lots were platted with the sidewalks within each of these private lots. And so it, it also limit, it is limiting in some, it challenges some of the coverage requirements that we're seeing within this development as far as the impervious. So having that sidewalk and additional rear concrete for those drive aisles is challenging some of those standards as we've reviewed this. In addition, I think it's important to note that oftentimes the front yard setback is measured from the back of the sidewalk. A lot of times lots are created there and those are typically within the right of way of the sidewalks themselves. So while it is increasing this front setback by reducing the rear yard setback, it is actually still in alignment with other developments as far as the setbacks from the sidewalk. I just wanted to point that out within the graphic here. It is also important to note, though, that the red dash line does represent the building footprint of which the building could occur. As you see on the graphic to the right, because it is the 15-foot minimum, we are not, the applicant is not requesting to change that. So there's still the ability to build within that footprint. I just wanted to point that out. So again, here is a close-up of kind of the blocks that we're looking at. And I will discuss a little bit further about the conditions of which we've put on these. But what is represented in blue are building permits that have already been pulled by the applicant team within this filing. Then the request has come since to allow for this reduction in the rear yard setback. So staff has reviewed that against the entirety of the subdivision and will be requesting that blocks in orange would also adhere to the existing R4 standards, that of which the blocks in blue have gone through the process of, in order to maintain that consistency along those block frontages. The main concern really with those were, again, the streetscape in ensuring that creating a scale, there was no concern of creating a scale that varied from what the intent was of the code. And most of these blocks within this, as you see, are fronting an open space area. So staff has reviewed this request against the criteria, the conditions in the criteria, and have the following responses to A, while the proposed alternative is perceived to have a negligible impact on the stated intent of a setback requirement, it offers the potential benefits by improving other aspects of the code, particularly in terms of lot coverage. B, the condition does not apply to the request. Residential uses and structures permitted within the R4 Zone District could continue to achieve the intent of the code in the comprehensive plan. Response to C, the implementation of the alternative could improve the amount of impervious surface coverage for each lot applying the waiver. The ability to orient the buildings closer to the rear lot and reducing the driveway could increase the impervious area within these lots. Response to condition D, that it does not apply. Lots within the Timneth Ranch Eighth Filing were platted in accordance with the standards of the underlying zone district. We then reviewed it against the criteria. Response to A, that the proposed reduction in the rear yard setback being requested, is being requested to facilitate the construction of the development project as planned by the applicant. This request supports the applicant's intent to design an alley-loaded product which aims to address their concerns related to insufficient driveway space that could lead to the encroachment into the drive aisles and associated easements. Additionally, the request would allow for more yard space within the front yard setbacks, potentially increasing impervious coverage and helping meet the lot coverage standards. In response to criteria B, the proposed reduction in the rear yard setback is not anticipated to have any direct negative impacts on public health or safety. However, as I mentioned, staff is concerned that applying a blanket reduction across all of these blocks could lead to a less cohesive streetscape, potentially creating visual inconsistencies with the surrounding developments and previously approved plot plans in the subject area. To mitigate this concern, staff recommends limiting the waiver to specific blocks in order to maintain visual consistency within the development in the surrounding neighborhood. In response to item C, the development could proceed in accordance with the requirements of this code under the zone district. However, the proposed reduction could improve other aspects of the code, furthering its intent. Without the waiver, the applicant would need to revise the building design for those that, again, are challenging the impervious lot coverage within this development. With that, the town, or following our view, the town, of the town code and criteria, staff is recommending approval of the waiver with the conditions that they be limited to with the following conditions, that they building permits for lots 11, 19, and 20 shall be submitted in accordance with the existing setback requirements of the R4 dimensional standards to ensure consistency with the building permits previously issued within the development. That concludes my portion of the presentation. The applicant team is here. If you have any questions for them.
Okay, and I, I have a process question. This is better for you, Mr. Kemper, Miss Stoffel. Why is the waiver process being utilized here as opposed to the variance and referral to the Board of Adjustment?
So the variance process is very limited under the charter to really circumstances where the terrain of the property does not allow for development.
Yeah, so the, the variance would be a hardship on the property. This does not apply to this situation. It does fit the criteria of items that could be waived from the council.
Council questions for staff or the applicant?
Yeah, so as I understand it, one of the main benefits is the consideration of parking at the rear where if this wasn't granted, people could park in their limited driveways rather than their garage and potentially block the common driveway. Is that accurate?
Yes, that was one of the concerns raised by the applicant team.
Yeah, and that ma, that makes sense. My concern is the red line on the drawing. If the waiver is granted and they are allowed to move farther back, it solves that problem. But it potentially creates another problem, which is they could make the buildings larger and extend it out to the red line and have more lot coverage, which would be more impervious coverage on the lot. Is there a way that we could approve the waivers for the specified lots? And for those lots, also prevent them from building out in front? By maybe increasing the setback for the front? Or is there a way that could be done administratively to prevent them from building out to that red line?
Yeah, you are correct that that line does represent the building footprint. So within that is what would be permitted with this new.
Yeah, it basically gives them more lot coverage than for the size of their building.
They would still need to adhere to the lot coverage that is per the R4 zoning standards. So as long as they're not exceeding that requirement, yes, they could create a larger home or building within that lot. I believe I'd have to talk with the applicant team to see what their thoughts are on creating a condition to the, the front yard setback as well.
Yeah, my, my preference would be to create an additional condition that would prevent them building out. If they wanted to shift the building back for the reasons stated, that makes sense to me. But I'm not in favor of allowing an extra nine feet or whatever it is for the size of the building on the, on the front side of the, or on the front lot side. So I would want a condition to prevent that.
Understood. And I don't want to speak for the applicant team. My understanding is the intent would be to shift these buildings, but you are correct that there would be flexibility within that if this went forward.
Can I, can I ask you a question along, excuse me? Along with what Bill is saying, if they do decide, since you know this would allow it without any conditions, if they do go all the way up to the red line, do they, does that exceed, you know, the maximum for that lot?
They likely would. Yeah, they're already having concerns with some of these to where it is over that. So we may have to look at this, if this weren't to be approved, to, to look at scaling down those buildings. However, yeah, if this were approved, I don't believe they would be able to meet that impervious coverage by maxing out that, that setback.
They might not max to the red line, but they could go between the current shift back and the red line in order to meet. I would just say, just shift the building back and call it done and put a condition on it.
You're correct in that. And so we do have minimum setback standards here in the town. So that does allow for the flexibility. They do not, it is not a build-to line. So within our standards, it is not the requirement that they have to meet those specific setbacks. There's the ability to provide different dimensions within their lots, just as long as they're meeting that minimum. But understood.
Am I correct to assume that all of these buildings are shaped in the way where it's that alleyway behind them? Are they all like that?
Correct. All of these blocks in question are alley-loaded product.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my, it's not necessarily a question, it's more a comment, so I'll leave it towards the end. But my, am I reading right? In this back blank section, you know, towards the bottom of the page, that would be the garage with the?
So this is the rear and this is the garage.
So they, they basically lose their driveway. So there is no parking. In theory, there would need to be no parking signs because a car wouldn't fit in that area, that six-foot area.
Yep, and so there would be no parking signs installed within those alleys. And there already is a no parking sign within this portion of the, the rounded private drive.
And your recommendation, go back one more, please? Your recommendation is to approve it on the blue, but to keep it as it is already set on the orange?
I apologize. It is a little confusing since there are already permits in play. So the blue are permits that were already requested by the applicant team and issued, meeting the standards of the R4 Zone District. So they have the 15-foot rear yard setback and 15-foot front yard.
So they're not requesting, they're not trying to change those?
Those will not change. And so that's where staff's response was, well, if you have those already in queue, we want to ensure that we maintain that consistency of those setbacks. So the orange blocks. So the orange blocks there would also be within the R4 existing standards. So as the thought processes, as you walk through this tract or drive through this tract, these setbacks are not significantly varied and creates that consistency along the street frontage.
Okay. Is there future concern that they might ask this on additional lots?
So these are the only lots that they own currently, and so that's we've limited to these specific ones and conditioned the ones that we felt appropriate.
And and just to share your concern again is the consistency, if they decide to buy another couple and they don't do this, there's going to be sporadic lots with different setbacks and it's not cohesive.
Yeah, ultimately, that's what we are trying to avoid.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
The other thing, Jeremy, if you look at it, is the orientation of the of the the buildings and the garages relative to that circle drive, you'll see that the lots that they're recommending are are not oriented towards the street, they're towards the alley.
So I'm just going to kind of build off what Councilman Holt asked in this case. So if you go back to that previous picture, so I know there's not a lot of parking back there, but if we eliminate some of that and people aren't supposed to park back there necessarily, what will be the impact to parking in these areas? And what kind of, you know, could this create issues with the on-street parking?
Absolutely. So the approval of this filing actually did not include these driveways as part of their calculations to meet the requirements. So they are meeting the overall parking and actually exceeding the parking requirements for the development. So each of these units has two stalls in the garage for parking. There are also additional stalls throughout the development. Unfortunately, I don't have it on the specific drawing, but as additional overflow parking within it, there has been accounted for within the development. And then there is on-street parking along Stone Brook Drive to help facilitate that. And so part of the concern of the applicant is that it is not necessarily an adequate parking space, 15 feet typically. If it's rear loaded, we would not support anything less than 20 feet to accommodate most car types that we see today. While there could be some cars that could fit within that, it is typically not ideal to have that as spacing for that. So in their sense, it would eliminate that false perception, but as far as the parking, it is meeting the requirements without even contemplating that as a space.
Okay, thank you. So in in terms of everything that's happening, like if we move the buildings back, that's not gonna, I see it's the emergency access, no concerns about fire trucks, ambulances, garbage trucks coming back there, that's been reviewed.
Yeah, no concerns there. That has been reviewed by PFA. The the shared driveway at the easement is not changing or lessening. It is going to remain the same. It is just the the lots themselves or the the driveway of those lots themselves that would decrease. So it has been reviewed by Better Fire Authority and our building official, and they have deemed that it is adequate in meeting those requirements.
Perfect. And in terms of just other maybe setbacks like this, is there other areas of Timneth where we do have these six foot setbacks? Like, is this 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 is this the first or is this?
There there are. So the Timneth Lakes subdivision does allow for, within the sixth filing, a five yard or five foot rear yard setback for those alley loaded products that was done within their planned development overlay. Trailside also did request a reduction in some of the rear loaded rear yard setbacks. That went down to eight feet was the the shortest that their distance went to. And then also within the code, so if this were a an accessory structure, we do allow four or five foot setback to the rear lot line. That could be a detached private garage as well. So it is utilized, it just wasn't necessarily contemplated for the principal building of these rear loaded lots.
Thank you, Chad.
Will reducing this setback impact any easement needs, utilities, maintenance, anything like that?
No, there was actually no easements dedicated or proposed within the rear rear yard setback, so it is not impeding any of those.
Okay. And then when we get around to a motion, it's, I guess it's probably important that we include the specific language in your recommended motion so that it applies to the correct properties. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the the red line space in front, and I don't know what the feeling is with the rest of the council, but I personally would like to see an additional condition that has the building moved back to to what's depicted on the right side in this in this diagram and not allow the building to go up to that red line or even if it's got to be somewhere in between for some other to meet some other coverage condition. I if you're going to shift it back and move it back six feet, then, you know, if I thumbs up on the waiver, I don't want the front of the building to go farther out.
Noted. I will, we'll just mention, though, that the coverage would likely remain the same as that concrete drive will also be counted against the impervious. So whether or not it is shifted, if they were to expand the building, it would be very similar to what is being proposed now, just a building footprint rather than a driveway.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of it going farther forward.
And at this point, is there a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the town council waivers to the Timneth Ranch eighth filing subdivision replat number one with the following condition. To maintain a cohesive streetscape, building permits for blocks 11, 19, and 20 shall be submitted in accordance with the existing setback requirements of the R4 dimensional standards. This is to ensure consistency with the building permits previously issued within the development.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I'd also like to, whether we have to formally make change this or something to to Bill's point of of not allowing them to then go forward. So maybe whatever the difference is that they moved it back is the difference that they have to keep in front. I don't know if that's an amendment to this, or I'm not sure how we go about doing that.
I believe there's a representative developer here as well, if you have any questions.
Sure, it looks like you're itching to itching to address us. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. My name's Jason Kloyes with Highland Development Services. I'm representing Hartford Homes, and I'm the one, the applicant, that put this together. And I think Chad did an excellent job presenting it, and again, thank you for considering this. Where this, just to give you some background, just so that you guys kind of know where this discussion started and how the request came about, it was when Hartford was looking at the limited space that they had for their front yards. So this this is unique that there is majority of these townhome lots do have the sidewalk that crosses in the front of their lot. Much of that, when we were in the early planning stages, we had some open space areas, some of them, there's one area where there's a pond, and we couldn't put the sidewalk outside of the lots. So when they were looking at kind of the usable space and kind of the desire of everybody to be able to use their outdoor space, that's where the request came to look at, how can we can we potentially move these back to gain that the owners more front yard usable space for their dogs, for their patios, for, you know, so on and so forth. So that's that's where this all originated from. And as we were looking at it, even with, I went through the code myself, and I'm not necessarily a code expert, I'm a civil engineer, and I went through it, and I couldn't find anything that was specific to rear loaded products in the Timneth Land Use Code. So that was one thing. When we have the 15 foot setback, you know, the cars are typically 20 foot deep, and they don't have adequate space to park. People would park there, and then all of those shared drives are dedicated as emergency access easements, so nobody should be obstructing those drives. In regards to the conditions, if you, then this is kind of where I wanted to speak up just on Hartford's behalf. We're already working through kind of the buildable area of each one of these lots, and with the six foot setback, we are right at the 75% buildable area. When we look at the sidewalk that crosses the front, so it's a four foot sidewalk that crosses the front, and there's three foot walks that lead up to each individual unit and patio or porch. And so right now, we are right at the 75%. So there's not even the ability to expand the building based off of that buildable area. One of the things I talked with Hartford right beforehand, they they definitely agree with the continuity of the streetscape and how far the buildings are set back. The one that they questioned was block 11, and that's really just because of the orientation to, so like, kind of, it's it's in reference to block 19. Mind, Chad, if you, so block 19 is the blue one that is the most recent building permit that was polled, and that one, we applied that 15 foot setback. Most of, a majority of that was timing. They really wanted to get homes, they wanted to get sticks going up, so they wanted to push forward with those ones maintaining the current setback. And block 11, they had some concern on whether they would love to be able to pull it, get more front yard, pull it away from the street. So they, and the way that the 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 blocks are oriented to the road to the to the north is that they're not necessarily the similar kind of streetscape experience that you have between blocks 23, 24, and then the orange ones to the bottom, 19 and 20. So they did ask for consideration that block 11 wasn't included as part of the conditions. And then we did kind of, when we put the request together originally, we did write it loosely to not be as specific about lots. I don't know if this is going to happen or not, but there was some potential about replating some of the condos, so those are those building envelopes. And so we don't want to have to come back in front of the board for another waiver request to apply this to the other buildings that could, so the densities wouldn't change, the the use wouldn't change, it would just that those condos, which is like, if you look at building envelope 12, would end up being townhomes and and then using that shared drive. So the townhomes would face, garages would face the drive on both sides. So like I said, this, I haven't, I heard about this months ago. I haven't heard if there's any progression on it, but I would like, if if it's possible, if you guys are comfortable, to keep it loose so that it applies to, you know, that area with the conditions of of excluding 19 and 20, but just so that if they do purchase those other condo blocks, the building envelopes, that we don't have to come back in front of council again. But we can too, also, if if need be. So that's my my input. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Can I ask Chad you to kind of respond to the block 11 specific situation and why it should or should not have the new standard?
Absolutely. So Jason is correct, it is a little different in that it doesn't actually, it's not the lot is not fronting that street, there is a little open space between it, so it is already set back a a little bit from that street. However, again, back going back to the consistency, block 13, if they move forward, as is, we felt that it was necessary to request a safer block 11. Block 10 across the street, actually done by a different builder, was also issued within the setbacks of the R4 standard. So just to eliminate any of that inconsistency there, we felt that it was appropriate to apply this standard or maintain the standard within that block or those for those specific lots.
That makes sense to me. Thank you. And Councilmember Jenkins, were your concerns about the building growing to fill the space, were those alleviated by the explanation?
On block 11 or lot 11 there, the driveways and garages in question are on the street side there, is that correct?
No, so they would still be accessed to the rear here, they do not have access off of this drive.
Oh, but the setback would likely change in the front, so it would look different on either side of the street.
It would have a different a different feel than what is already in block 10, block 13.
That makes sense, Chad. Thanks.
All right, so there is a pending motion before the council. It's the mirrors the recommended motion in the packet. I believe councilmembers Lake and Holt have provided feedback already, but based on this additional discussion, anything to add? Councilmember Jenkins, you're okay?
No, after, excuse me, after the feedback provided by the applicant and Chad, I'm going to be in support of this motion. I also support the idea of putting the permits, you know, the, sorry, the the recommendations by the staff for blocks 11, 19, and 20, based on looking at this again and looking at block 11, looking across the street at block 10. I do want that cohesiveness. I think that's fair for this neighborhood and looking at that. So so I think that that makes sense, and that's part of what we look for in the town of Timneth, so I'm going to support that recommendation by the staff and what we put forward in the motion.
And I will also be supporting, I think the record has been made. So with that, all those in favor of approving the recommended motion, including the condition to maintain a cohesive streetscape, building permits for blocks 11, 19, and 20 shall be submitted in accordance with the existing setback requirements of the R4 dimensional standards, to ensure consistency with the building permits previously issued within the departments. All those in favor of approving the recommended motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay? All right, it passes unanimously. All right, we have one final item on our agenda, and I'll ask Ms. Stoffel, I believe there was a previous request by the applicant for us to continue this matter for a month. Is that still the request?
I believe that is still the request. We can ask for clarification if they wanted to just take it off the agenda or continue it, but I think the request that I received yesterday was to continue this until April 8th council meeting.
For what purpose?
Good evening, welcome back.
Good evening. I'm David O'Leary from the law firm of Spencer Fane in Denver. Did I turn it on? And the reason for the extension, we received an email from town attorney requesting, you know, additional information to make sure that we had met the town council's previous requests of additional alternatives and have sufficient backup information. If you feel that we've satisfied that by the information that we provided, we just wanted to provide enough opportunity and time for the alternatives that were requested and give sufficient time for the information to be processed. We did get some recommendations, a couple of different recommendations from the engineer with some backup, but it was it was given to council on Friday, and we just didn't know if that was sufficient time. If there's sufficient information, of course, we would proceed and go forward, but we if there's additional information or things that you that you as the council believe is necessary in order for us to satisfy the previous requests, we did. To satisfy the previous requests we did two months ago. We have, of course, want additional time in order to make sure that we've satisfied all. City council and staff's recommendations and and requirements. We do believe that we've satisfied most of the requirements and and the obligations. To to negotiate in good faith, we haven't been able to establish or come to a solution and that's why we are here yet again. This thing has been sitting out here for four years. The service plan was approved in 2021. Developer just wants to move forward. And we believe that, you know, the opportunity to do that in a, you know, court forum is probably the best. Method to resolve that rather than argue it or debate it in a city council meeting.
Very well. Well, um, you know, I do appreciate that the parties attempted to. Continue to negotiate and that that apparently wasn't successful. So we. As a council, appreciate at least that that effort was undertaken. And that was certainly one reason why we continued it to today. The other reason was the specific request to better understand. The alternatives available to your client. And I believe that there was some concern expressed by council that. You know, we might be more inclined to approve the request if we felt like there was a lack of. Suitable alternatives. And so we we asked better understand what those alternatives are. You did provide a memo and a chart that had four alternatives. I'm not sure to the extent that, you know, you feel comfortable being able to discuss what those alternatives are and and the price points on that. If you do feel confident in that, I think we could certainly. Have that discussion today. If if you don't feel like you're you're in a place that 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 makes sense today. I think we could likely continue it. So I guess I'd I'd defer to you as your request today. To continue to April 8th, or would you like to continue?
Well, and again, we want to supply you with enough information so you can make an educated decision on this. We do believe that there are other alternatives, but the the path that was chosen be was because of the existing easement. Path of least resistance. We tried to hug the property that was owned by the Fisher Farms ownership. As much as possible to minimize. You know, the the crossing of of multiple different areas. There is an existing easement. So that was the path of least resistance, we felt. When we were designing it, all of our designs and approvals, all the development things that. Mr. Martindale had brought up have already been considered since 2020 and and those are development considerations, not easement considerations. Those are things that we'll take up with the city council when we do our approved development plans. We can't even get there. Without the annexation. So we can discuss those alternatives and the cost estimates that are provided to them. But we just, you know, from our perspective, we believe that with miss, at least with Mr. Martindale, we're not going to be able to. Resolve that without the assistance of a third party.
Okay, so is is your request today that we go ahead and and call the item and have the discussion and and render a decision today? Or is your request to continue it?
I would I would say that we've. I would request that we move forward. We've got an IGA and a resolution in front of you that has addressed the town's concerns. We believe it's fair. Anybody who connects can connect and tap in and pay whatever their appropriate proportion of share is at the time of connection. If they can't resolve that, we'll have to go to court and go through that process. But we believe that we've satisfied the requirements of the town in that IGA and in that resolution. So anybody that taps in, whether it's Mr. Martindale or anyone else, would be subject to the same. You know, cost sharing and and it is fair. It's reasonable. Ms. Stifel and I have used that form and format in other jurisdictions as well. So it's. It it works and it's a fair way to determine proportionate share of cost allocations.
Okay, very well then. Sounds like there is no request to continue. So we will go ahead and move forward and I'll formally call. Item seven C, resolution number four, series 2025. A resolution approving intergovernmental agreement between the town of Timneth and Fisher Farm Metro District 1. Regarding limited authorization to exercise eminent domain. We did previously hear extensive discussion on this matter, both both from you, your client, from Mr. Martindale. I will note that earlier today, Mr. Martindale also addressed the council. I would ask council to incorporate his his remarks in into your thoughts here today as well as the materials that that he submitted. Mr. O'Leary, I I don't want to relive the hearing that we had last time. And so I guess I would ask you to specifically bring council up to speed on. The findings of the alternative analysis. And then after that, I will ask if any council members have any specific questions. And we'll go from there.
And and Mr. Maruska is here as well to to assist with some of that information. We did. We went to is it EPS now? Used to be Northern Engineering. So EPS did do some alternatives. They did. Provide different for different alternatives and different paths that you could go through. There is a cost differential that will come up if we go a different route. And the only reason for for pursuing the original was that was what we were doing in in 2020. We were following our original plans and some of those designs that were actually in the service plan for on and off site improvements. Those four alternatives do provide additional alternatives, but they would require us to negotiate. With those adjacent property owners, we have approached a couple of them about obtaining those and we can do that as an alternative. You know, the plans that have been submitted and reviewed from a staff perspective, just in the interests of economy. Those plans that have been submitted and reviewed by staff. And and received any approvals that they could receive in order to do the. Plat approval process. That's a little bit different than the development process and those. Development agreements and any nuances that are necessary in order to construct those improvements. Or receive those approvals of those actual designs. Still have to go through the development approval process and those plans do have to be approved and considered. By your staff and council when they get to a final. We're just trying to make it through the annexation process to get to get go into the next phase. So I would say that these four other alternatives provide you additional alternatives. And if one of them looks more attractive than another, we would pursue that. I I believe that, again, we're trying to stay consistent with the plans that were already submitted. In order to minimize the additional work redoing the work that was done before. So the the only reason to pursue the original plan is all the work's been done and we were at. You know, plat annexation, you know, plat approval for those kinds of things.
Right. You know, the current plan. Had a cost of, and you know, something like 3.1 million. There was another alternative that had a total cost like 3.5 million. And then there was an alternative that appeared to be considerably cheaper. It was a 2.2 million.
2.5.
2.5.
And.
Yeah. And you know, so I. I I understand that the point of, yeah, but there is some sunk costs, some effort that's already gone into this. But I guess, you know, why shouldn't you just pursue the $700,000, $600,000 cheaper option and and move on?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Benjamin Maruska. I represent the developer of Fisher Farm. Thank you for hearing me tonight. Absolutely. We'd love to. The issue we've run into with that. And I think it's good that you actually see there is a cheaper option. We would go with that alternative. Unfortunately, in that situation, Timneth Landings has rejected our ability to outfall our our water into their system. And it's because of the complications with their system. They can't handle the water. So while it would be cheaper for us, it's engineering from a from the standpoint of engineering. It just doesn't work for our project. And to piggyback off what David had said with regard to the current alignment. It it has been in our plans. It's it's what we proposed to do. We were working directly with the halls until. Until the exclusive easement was put in place during the process of our negotiation with the halls. But the reason we had selected this location was because of the existing underdrain. Also with the fact that Box Elder sanitary sewer easement is in the same location. So. We could put both improvements in the same trench. It's more economical to trench once. And so that location that made sense from the standpoint of just economical development. But yes, absolutely. When when the cost estimates came in and we saw that 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 route was actually cheaper. It would make sense if we could if we could do that. But we I think we submitted. To Ms. Stifel, the letter we received from Timneth Landings rejecting our ability to outfall our water into their system. We just are not able to do that.
Okay, so so even though it's cheaper, it's it's not a viable option?
Correct.
Okay. And then Mr. Martindale heads, you expressed concerns about impact on the water table and. And all of that. If you were to implement any of these other alternate solutions. Would if those concerns were legitimate, would those concerns be present with any of the other alternatives?
Mayor, I'm not. I'm not an engineer. I can't really speak to that. Part of the reason we wanted to be able to answer the questions and why we'd consider continuance was so that we could have our water engineer here. Who Mr. Martindale actually referenced in his comments. We've asked our engineer to analyze it when they originally looked at the issue. There were no issues with with de-watering any water wells. I can provide, we got an email late in the day from our water engineer saying the water, the wells were actually in the last couple of years moved closer to our property. Not sure why, but it would seem like they're now within a influence where it may affect that, but I can't really speak to it. So we can provide that information, but I standing here tonight, I can't really speak to that.
Thank you, sir. Council questions?
Yeah, how how many lots are proposed for the Fisher development? I I know you mentioned it last time, but. I I thought it was something like 119 or something.
I think it's more than that.
More.
We've been focused so much on water that I've stopped doing what I do for a living and actually focus on. I've become more of a planner and a negotiator again than an actual transactional attorney.
Chad, do you have any recollection of the number of lots that are proposed for the Fisher development? A thousand lots?
I'm not sure it's a thousand.
But it's a it's it's a big number. So here's my problem. Option one, you have a total cost of almost 3.2, not 3.1, 3.2 million. Option two or option four is like 4.3, very expensive and. Going under I 25 and yeah, complicated. Option three is out because the landowner won't cooperate. And they have a metro district, so I presume you couldn't. You couldn't put an easement on them that they didn't want. But option two is only $364,000 less. Which amounts to, let's say it's eight or 900, you're probably talking about $400 per. Per lot more expensive, which is pretty de minimis. And the difference between the two is like around 10%, which is normal. Kind of fudge factor anyway. So I, in my my view, one and two seem pretty equivalent. Cost wise. I know, and there's overlap between. There are parts of this that are identical between the two, correct? I mean, parts of the costs and parts of the line items are the same.
There, yes, correct.
Right. And some are different, like the. Reconstruction County Road 5 is in two, but not in not in one. But it looks like a lot of the rest of it is fairly similar. So why wouldn't you consider option two rather than a a potential legal fight and? You know, I would think eminent domain is kind of the absolutely last resort that you should go to. If there's a viable alternative that isn't financially burdensome, and this doesn't seem burdensome, option two, so.
And councilmember Jenkins. Absolutely. We wouldn't have spent four years on this and I don't even know what my client's legal fees look at this look like at this point. I'm I don't know if I'm that expensive, but. I don't know, some some people in our office might be. The issue with option two that we've run into is that we would have to put the underdrain through the the town's right through right of way. And I think it was our understanding and I haven't been involved in this project. Since the genesis of it, but my understanding was putting the underdrain in the right of way was not something was not a viable option for for our client. Because it would be in the town's right of way and the county right of way.
Could somebody from engineering respond to that?
Yes. So again, this was previous past our time, you know, before both Earl and I, but we have been. Catching up with some of the previous engineers. So as far as under drains, they're usually don't want, you know, the town doesn't really want those in the right of ways because first of all, it's a private entity. You know, even though it's a metro district, sometimes it could be an HOA, that could be like 10 people, 10 homeowners. So. The issue of like, if we have to go back redo the road, how to make sure that they go ahead and fix them. The other thing is. Now we have different property owners that we're going to affect. And I think also it was really deep. I think so basically you'd have to. Redo the road and if they had to do any maintenance, the whole road would have to be redone each time. Or if you do in the back area, you don't have those same constraints. So I guess at a high level, that's would be some of the concerns the town would have as far as, you know, the right of way and using the right of way for private purposes.
Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question? So these four options are not actually options? Is that what you're telling me? Because seeing them as an option makes me think that it's an option. So could you just clarify? I'm looking at the document, which I don't know if we can pull up for anyone who's watching to see. Because I had a very difficult time finding it in my email. But could we pull that up at some point just to get everyone on the same page and just maybe walk through? Because you've listed that two are not options anymore and so I'm a little confused on that.
And. Councilmember Lake, yes, it's, these are the options that were studied as part of determining. The location that we ultimately ended up with. And so this isn't, in the last 60 days, we didn't develop these options.
It's dated March 7th on my the on the the sheet of paper that that is the attachment.
Correct. And our engineer, these options have been evaluated previously. And we were asked at the hearing in January to put back of napkin. Costs to what those options would cost. And you can see here, our engineer kind of went farther than back of napkin and actually put together. I think a more comprehensive cost analysis of each of these options. But these are what we chose and how we ended up where we are today. And just as an update, as with respect to something that was said earlier in the in the meeting. We have actually been in contact also with Ms. Conkle, the owner, the. She's one of the owners, I think the matriarch of the family that owns the Brent's Ranch property. And we've been working with. John Mark Patterson, her attorney, to come to an agreement there. We're very close. He had a medical emergency, cannot read documents at the moment. He needs a couple, couple of weeks before. I think he had retinal, a detached retina, so he couldn't. That's what his out of office said. He wasn't able to read documents. So. That was another reason we had kind of asked for the continuance was to kind of get that in hand, but we're well down the road and we can share the correspondence with Carolyn. If you'd want to see that too, but. So we've been we're we've been working over the past 60 days.
So quickly then, which of the four options are are viable options?
At this date, option one is a viable option. We would have to spend just looking at. So option two, if if the town, if if we were allowed to put it in the right of way, it would be a viable option for us. Option three, Timneth Landing has rejected our our outfall. And option four is requires us to bore under I 25 and dump into the Fort Collins. I think it's a pond there. I'm not exactly sure. But we would have to secure right of way through. We would have to secure the right to bore under the freeway. To outflow into Fort Collins. They're not likely to give us that, but given. But given the construction cost, it to us at that cost, it's not as viable. And also bearing in mind that while it it wouldn't be a town improvement, it is a public improvement. And if there was any, if there are any other neighbors that wanted to participate and utilize capacity in our underdrain, which there are, Brent's Ranch would want to if they, when they develop. Mr. Martindale has always expressed desire to tie into the underdrain. And there's one more property to the north. Willis? The Willis subdivision has expressed interest. If we increase the price of of the construction of the underdrain, their proportionate share goes up. So it becomes more expensive, not just for us constructing it, but also for every other development that's going to tie in. So that has ripple effects on home affordability, cost of lots, cost of construction in projects throughout throughout this area.
I think I'll I'll tie into what Lisa's. So of the four, you're saying one is one is doable, viable, no issues? That's eminent domain, got it. And potential legal, got it.
So the option one was also set forth in the service plan that was approved. So that's been the proposal ever since the service plan was approved. And I think that the reason behind the question about alternatives was to demonstrate need, that there was not an alternative route available that they could use in lieu of going forward with eminent domain. And so that's why the options presented are not viable. But the the explanation was these are the other options that we explored, determined not to be viable. That's why there is the need to go forward with the eminent domain.
So. Carolyn, can you?
So I guess I just want to refresh her here. Tonight, council is looking to approve this IGA, right? In the IGA, we are not approving the eminent domain. That's not what we're approving tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, another way to think about it is the service plan has a limitation that metropolitan districts cannot use eminent domain without getting the consent from the town in advance through an IGA. So had they been thinking about this, you know, back in twenty twenty one and known it was going to be a problem, they would have probably said as part of the service plan approval and would have been before that public hearing presenting to you why they needed to have consent to use eminent domain. So since this came up later, they're now requesting consent to use eminent domain just for acquisition of these two easements and well, three easements. The temporary construction easement, the permanent easement, and the second easement that stands on top of the permanent easement they're requesting, which is an existing easement. So they need to condemn the existing easement and then then they can condemn these, the additional easement they want over the underlying property. It is not your role to have to approve eminent domain. So you don't have to, yes, you don't have to make determinations as to what the proper amount is, whether this is a public purpose. And because all of those elements have to be proven in a separate court proceeding. So they're going to go forward and have to prove each of those elements. In addition, you are not approving any of the land development items at this point. Those are separate processes as well. And, you know, town engineer can talk about those if you have any questions about that. So what you're being asked to approve is the IGA to allow them to use the process of eminent domain to condemn these three easements. And as a condition, based on the concerns we heard from the property owners, we did add that they have to allow future tie in to that underdrain from other property owners, provided that there's sufficient capacity and that they pay their proportionate share of the cost of that of the original construction. And that IGA is going to be later subject to approval by your town engineers. That's going to be years, could be years down the road if ever the other property owners want to connect.
Okay, okay, perfect. Then thank you for that clarification. So in this IGA, this is, in your opinion, been part. And just want to make sure I asked this question properly and and work through this. So the town staff has reviewed this, you've reviewed this, and this IGA is in place that this is to the advantage of the town, right? Because there's no no cost to the town, but this has been supported. And at this point, this seems like the best path forward because we are not in the position to make the eminent domain judgment. This is going to be left to, if it comes to that, which it sounds like there's a path forward in the IGA. This is, which is set out in the IGA, but this is, we've set a path forward in the IGA, but there's eminent domain in here, but we're not deciding that, right? Am I asking that question correctly, just to make sure?
That was a long question.
Sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I'm looking at my role correctly.
Okay, you are not approving the use of eminent domain. You are not approving the condemnation of this property. You are approving the ability of the metropolitan district to separately seek eminent domain and condemnation of these property through a separate court process. And remember that this underdrain was defined as a public improvement in the service plan. It contemplated that the metropolitan district could provide financing for the underdrain at this location. And this step, so to that extent, it's also consistent with the service plan. It's just that they have not been able to acquire the easement that they need to build it.
Okay, thank you, sorry. That was a long question. Thank you, Carolyn.
Yeah, and I I just, I want clear statement from the town engineer, Justin Earl. Option two is not viable. Is that correct?
That's the one with County Road forty? Or the go downs?
Well, County Road forty is in both one and two. Reconstruction County Road forty is in one, dig around concrete packs, County Road forty is in one. The same, two statements are in option two. The primary, primary difference is reconstruction County Road five is in two. It's not in one.
Yeah, so.
So it's it's around County Road five.
So I mean, like you said, anything could be engineered and it could be a viable option. But like I said before, the town would rather have like, even though it's like a public metro district, it's still like a private, you know, not like XL where it's through the whole town, this be a specific area. Usually per their standards, we discourage it, but we do allow under circumstances.
And it is a governmental entity, correct? I mean, the metro district that would be acquiring it is another governmental entity. And I, have we had in the past other metro districts do similar things where we've allowed it? Where the town has allowed it?
Yeah, I'd have to go back and research that and get back to you unless.
I mean, without knowing that, I'm having a hard time.
Okay, I can speak to that one. Okay, so this is the second time we've received a request for use of eminent domain from a metropolitan district, to my knowledge. And this is based on talking to the prior town engineers. The second, the other time was.
The question isn't about eminent domain. It's about has the town made an agreement with another metro district to run an easement through a town, through a town easement?
Okay, so the town, so we do not require easements when utilities run through public rights of way. So we do not have separate easement agreements. We certainly do have public improvements in town rights of way in many circumstances.
Done, approved from a metropolitan district?
Oh, absolutely. And and also the water and sanitation districts in the neighborhood, certainly.
We've done a bunch of them in the town of Windsor in order to put in a bunch of improvements.
Yeah, so my my simple point is.
Through the metro district in order for the district to help either finance or administer. But it was in conjunction with the town. So the construction and the maintenance is typically gone through the district if it's not dedicated over to the town.
Right.
So we we wouldn't need the easement if it was dedicated over the town because it'd be in your right of way or your improvement.
Correct.
In this instance, be, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, so there's no request that the town take over ownership of this? No. So even if they ran through it, they, it wouldn't be an ownership question. Now, if your question is, do we have any other underdrains running through public right of way? Do we know the answer to that? Or is that something we need to?
I have a lot of districts with underdrains in them.
No, again, we'd have to do some research, but that's a question like in Wildwing, there's like non potable systems. So there's other utilities that metro districts have.
We have, it sounds like we have a history of other metropolitan districts using town right of ways to run public improvements through them. So it, to my mind, number two is not off the table. Number two is on the table unless you can demonstrate to me that we don't, that we haven't done it elsewhere in town with other metro districts.
And I would only comment that we had another one in Wildwing that we did, but it wasn't in a right of way. It was on town property for purposes of a non pot system and an entry feature. But we weren't in the town right of way, so we weren't in a situation.
But you were on town property.
We were on town property. And we needed it for the infrastructure. It's our responsibility to to take care of it as a metro, as a Wildwing metro district. But we aren't in a street or roadway where there could be, you know, in in the future, maintenance responsibilities that could impact both of us.
I mean, my feeling is without knowing that, I I couldn't approve this without having the right background. And if we need to defer it until we get more information, I think that's the right thing to do. I don't want to consent to a process that maybe we don't need to consent to if we have a history of an alter, an alternative that is essentially about the same cost and pretty de minimis if it's divided by a thousand or even a higher number. If you bring in these other properties and other lots, it's it's a pretty small financial difference. So I I'd really like to understand what the history is with regard to other metropolitan districts and the town relationship.
And just to add clarification, you're talking about capital cost estimates and changes. We wouldn't need to use the eminent domain process if we could get into an agreement.
Right.
Mr. Martindale. So we wouldn't be talking about this IGA or any of that if we had an agreement four years ago. We just have been unable to get into an agreement with the gentleman for four years. We wouldn't be in front of you with this resolution and wouldn't need to go through this. But it's not, it's for the court to decide, not us.
I just have a quick question for Carolyn. Are there certain criteria that we have to consider or that have to be met in order for us to approve this measure?
There are not. So this is a legislative item, not a quasi judicial item. And so just like approval of a service plan, you have a lot of discretion in approving a service plan. While the service plan right now, they're required to comply with the service plan and can't have a material modification without your consent. And it indicated that it needed your consent, but didn't lay forth any criteria for there. So in the staff report, I did lay out Loveland's consents, that criteria for when they use their own eminent domain, in case that's helpful for you. But those are not binding. Those are just factors that you can consider in making this determination.
All right. So at this point, I think we probably have three options. We could continue the matter again for additional research. We could entertain a motion to approve the resolution or we could entertain a motion to deny the resolution. Any three of those, if there were a motion made, would get us to the point that we could enter into discussions and and talk these things through. So at this point, I'd ask if any council member has a motion they'd like to make.
I would like to move that we defer it for further information with regard to past history, with regard to the, how the town has dealt with other public improvements with other metro districts to determine if option two is in fact viable or not.
This council member Jenkins would like to continue the matter. Would you like to continue it to a date certain?
As a month's sufficient time to dig that information up, Justin, Earl?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so one month.
So that would be our first meeting in April?
I will note that property owner Jason Martindale indicated he'll be out of the country on that date. I don't know if that's a relevant factor or not, but I did want to bring that to your attention. Jason Martindale?
Mr. Martindale, I saw your email. When when are you back in town? If this matter were continued to that be the April twenty second meeting? You would be in town, is that right? So Councilmember Jenkins, is it your motion?
I think that one didn't work for the developer's attorney.
Sorry. My twentieth anniversary is on the twenty third of April, so I will be in Sonoma.
I know, yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather give you good information, do some good background since it was prior to both Earl and I, so.
May thirteenth, everyone?
Councilmember Jenkins, is it your motion to continue this matter to the May thirteenth council agenda?
Sure, that seems like it fits with everybody's schedule.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, before we vote, anyone like to discuss that motion?
I just feel like without that information, I can't make a fair determination as to whether option two is viable or not viable. If there's only one, then if option one's the only one there, but if there are two options, it may change how people feel about consent and the change in the in the IGA, so.
Any other comments?
So I'm I'm not in favor of moving this out any further, just in my opinion. The reason why is I think I would support the IGA at this point based on the idea that, you know, we have come to a point of after four years, I think, looking at this and the communication back and forth, we've asked them to push it out, come to an agreement, hasn't been reached. So I I will be not be voting in favor, but that will be my reason for not voting in favor of it.
I'll note, my position is, you know, we can always wait for for more information. But I feel like I have sufficient information that I could vote on the motion this evening. And so I also would would be inclined to move the matter forward this evening.
I will. I will also share that I think there is ample amount of data, emails, years of history on both sides that at this point, I think it's been abundantly clear that the IGA move, just moves it into the courts and lets the courts decide, you know, the proper step for moving forward with that. So I will also be, would be in favor of moving this forward tonight.
Okay, so the motion before us is to continue the matter to May thirteenth. All those in favor of continuing the matter to May thirteenth signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion fails three to two. So at this point, it would be proper to entertain a motion either to approve the resolution or to deny the resolution. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the resolution, proving intergovernmental agreement between the town of Timneth and Fisher Farm Metropolitan District, number one, regarding limited authorization to exercise eminent domain.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. We will then begin discussion on the motion to approve the resolution, beginning with Mayor Pro Tem Wagner.
Yeah, looking at this, I appreciate all the work that's been done here by both the metro district and Mr. Martindale. I'm looking at the staff I'm, I'm looking at the staff advantages in this case. And I think that one of the big things for me, the district will be required to follow statutory, statutory procedures for eminent domain. So I look at this and say that our, our role in this is to look at the service plan, make sure that that is being followed. And so I say that my vote will be in favor of this based on the advantages listed here in this packet.
Councilmember Holt?
I mean, I think I shared my comments earlier, but I, I do echo the extensive effort seems like both from both parties as well as the town, other councils, other engineers, everyone, I think at this point. And, you know, the town has, has laid out, you know, good advantages, specifically, easements will be at no cost to the town. I think, you know, putting it into the proper hands to move this forward or deny it, I think that's, that's why I agree to move this forward.
Councilmember Lake?
Without it being deferred, I will also be supporting this. And just want to reiterate that it is not us deciding whether it is an eminent domain case, but just allowing this to move forward as, as stated.
Councilmember Jenkins?
Yeah, I will not be supporting this. The whole point of asking for an alternative analysis, one being provided to us, and then we don't know whether one of them is viable or not. Two, at least one, we know is not viable. I just don't think it's, I don't think I have enough information. If, if two was absolutely not viable, then I would be voting in favor of it. But since I can't determine that, I'm going to vote no.
I will acknowledge that this process has been going on for many, many years. And I do take the metro district at their word that they have been diligently attempting to resolve this for quite some time. This council clearly expressed a desire last time to encourage the parties to work through things. And I appreciate this council's hesitation to utilize eminent domain. I, I think we really are trying to recognize the significance that comes with, you know, the government, a government entity, even if a metro district, taking someone's property against their will, even if, you know, or a property right, you know, even if it is compensated. And so, you know, that is why we ask for additional information, ask for these alternative analysis. Because ultimately, I think we need to feel comfortable that authorizing eminent domain is a reasonable thing to do. And I feel like authorizing it tonight, we have done due diligence in this. We, we have asked good questions and I appreciate the alternative analysis that came here. Although there is an option that conceivably could be cheaper, you know, that is not a practical option because where the, the water would outflow to, that recipient is, is not willing to accept it due to structural issues, that that system simply couldn't handle it. I appreciate that there is another alternate that is not cheaper, but is not significantly more expensive. And I appreciate the desire to want to explore that more. My concern in doing that is if we were to deny this and force that option to be explored, and then that option is not ultimately viable, this project continues to be delayed. And ultimately, the town has authorized, the metro district has authorized the Fisher Farm development, and it is in the town's interest for that development to, to go forward. So, you know, I, I think we've done our due diligence tonight. I, I think we've shown that reasonable options have been explored and exhausted. You know, that this option was not chosen to disadvantage a particular property owner, but it was chosen because the engineers looked at the options and is the one that, given all the factors, made the most sense. And so I, I will be voting in, in support of this. Any other commentary before we vote? All those in favor then of the motion to approve the resolution, approving intergovernmental agreement between the town of Timneth and Fisher Farms Metropolitan District, number one, regarding limited authorization to exercise eminent domain, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, the motion carries for one, and the record will reflect that Councilman Jenkins voted in opposition.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Carolyn.
Counsel, I believe we've come to the end of our agenda. All right, very well, we will stand adjourned.